Can we quiet down, please? It's nine o'clock. Everybody, it's nine o'clock, we've got to start the meeting. Nine o'clock. Alright, that was the hardest it's ever been in this room. But, uh, I guess there's a first time for everything. Alright, we've called the meeting to order. Yeah, opening prayer, who has the... Mr. Fulton, would you like to lead us in?
Sure, I will.
Dear God and Father, thank you for this day, Lord, thank you for all the blessings that you give our county. God be with us today as we deliberate the county's business and, um, just be present with us. We pray all these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, first thing we have is a recognition of Ms. Ava Clarity for her retirement. She worked here in Jackson County for a little while. I mean, I guess thirty-nine years is a pretty good amount of time to say, "I've had enough and it's time to retire." But, uh, if you would come forward, we've got a presentation for you. I'll read it. Ava has worked with Jackson County for almost four decades, first with the tax assessor's office, then with the GIS information systems department. Ava has always represented the county with an exemplary level of professionalism and dedication. As a mapping technician, she facilitated implementing the county's parcel and land development system by using ink and miler to draw maps on drafting tables. Then advanced to working with the newest and one of the best GIS systems in the state of Mississippi. Her knowledge of Jackson County law of the land will be greatly missed. Also, her dependability, forthrightness, and friendship will be remembered and is appreciated by those who have been privileged to work closely with Ava over the years. The board is grateful to Ava for her loyalty and distinguished service to Jackson County over the years and wish her the best in all her future endeavors. Alright, so the board will come down. If you have a couple words to say, you can do that. That thirty-nine years gets... We can't go by that, you just had to go by a few minutes.
Did y'all want to say something, Paul or Eric?
Ava, thank you for everything you've been doing for the last forty years. Ever since I was ten years old. Yeah, I think we're gonna be losing half of our brain, especially on D knowledge and, uh, processes and assignments, access and all.
Y'all got our phone, right?
We do. One speed dial. Thank you very much.
I seen the phone out there and I thought my phone out there.
Alright, that brings us to amendments to the agenda. Mr. Cumbus?
Don't have any.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir. I have one discussion, it's about illegal dumping and something I found at the conference last week, but I think maybe we could maybe help with that illegal dumping. We can do that under supervisor item.
Mr. Eldridge?
None.
County administrator?
No.
Road manager?
Board attorney?
Yes, I have two, both for executive session. One is a notice of claim we received regarding an accident involving a road department tractor. That will not take long. The other is, uh, a pending litigation lawsuit is Bolton versus Simpson, that should not take long either. But, two initial items for executive session.
Any other amendments to the agenda?
I've got one.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to do the employee information off the consent agenda to, um, under human resources afterward, return to radio session.
Any other amendments to the agenda? Do we have a motion to accept the amendments as presented?
I move.
Motion by Mr. Taylor, second by Mr. Bossarge. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to public comments. Do we have anybody here for public comments? Okay.
Ellen Hall, Ocean Springs. Um, since I was here last, I got, took the bar and Mississippi was passed and sworn in and actually I'm gonna run right after this to the court. So, um, if you see me running out the room, it's not because I'm not liking you guys. I just want to say that when I came to speak a few months ago about the voting precinct, about the alleged, um, issues with the signs being up during voting and the accessibility, and you said, "Can't, can't help you, you gotta go to the city of Ocean Springs." Um, I realized and found out that that's pretty much Patty Gaston, the city clerk, and I realized I was not gonna go anywhere with that. So I said, "You know what, I should be checking this out better." So I went to the villa and I spoke with the manager, Jeanne Brooks. She's been extremely professional, very helpful. She said, "You can have accessibility if you would like, if you would like to meet with the residents." So I set up a meeting, had a meeting with the residents to inform them. I got to the meeting room and guess who was waiting for me? Patty Gaston was there and she said that she was gonna sit in on my private meeting. I said, "No, you're not." And she insisted and I said, "Why not?" Just observed, she said, "I promise I won't say a word." She ended up heckling my meeting five times, saying basically that I was telling untruths about the TIF bond, which is what is exactly the subject for today, one of the agenda's items. So, I want to say that as well. But, I want to be on the record, I am not for taking the polling precinct away from the villa. I have seen the light, I realize that these people, um, it's just a really great thing for them to be able to be right there to vote, but they need to be informed. And all I want them to do is know what's going on and vote for people, not because they're feeding them, not because they're doing nice things for them, but because they understand the issues. So, we are, we're doing that and we are going to be informing them every month of the latest things that are going on with the city. And they make the decision and we don't tell them that we are for or against any candidate. So, that being said, on the TIF bond, um, my feelings about the TIF, and this is where the issue came up with Patty Gaston, was I believe that a TIF bond is supposed to be used when you're trying as a city or a municipality to get something to be developed in an area where maybe you need to urge a developer to come in. And so maybe you need to get them to do a TIF bond to help them with infrastructure. And then eventually, the bond will, you know, pay for that, but eventually the incremental tax increase, when the taxes come in, when the property is valued at more, those taxes will go to pay the bond off instead of going to the city or the schools or whatever. So in this case, we don't really want, most people don't want, a hotel built on an environmentally labeled toxic waste site. And it's between a daycare center and an elementary school and it's in a resident, bordering on a residential area where there's very narrow streets and very difficult parking. So, this was not asked for by the people. This is what the developers want, this is what the mayor wants, to develop tourism, to make it more like Bourbon Street. Um, we don't want that and we feel that a TIF bond, and I'm praying that you guys will bring sanity to this, just like you did for the Ocean Springs Marina. We need an adult to vote here and we need you guys to stop this. But putting a hotel on a toxic waste site and giving it to a developer who is a, what, an LLC? Do we know what an LLC is? A limited liability corporation who is only responsible with liability up to the value of the capitalization of that company. When I looked up that LLC, the address was incorrect, it wasn't even a real address. They've since corrected that, but that tells me they didn't do much due diligence on that company if its address was not even correct. Now, we're gonna take it from Laika, several billion dollar international corporation who's acknowledged that they're responsible for that property and it will not be built on until it's cleaned up and we're gonna run out and do a TIF bond now and, and, and help this developer out so that they can build a seventy-five million dollar hotel? And we're gonna end up not getting that tax revenue in the years forward because it's gonna go back to pay the bond? Does that make sense? And so we asked it to be tabled, to be waited until, until they clean this up, until somebody really wants that hotel there other than developers. And they voted no to table that, no. And it was requested. I beg you to please bring sanity to help us in Ocean Springs because we really don't have it there right now and you are our only hope. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment?
I just have a question. Under your road department, Adam J., you got, uh, a resolution approving a memorandum, uh, to do a traffic study at the Ocean Springs Middle School. I just wonder when y'all were going to do the traffic study, when it was going to be done? Because if it's done in the summertime, that's kinda irrelevant, I just make sure.
Generally, when they do traffic studies, they do it during the school year. So if it, if it happens during the summer, if it gets assigned to happen during the summer, they'll wait until school starts. Because they want to do it during the most normal time period possible. And if Joe's got any additional information?
No, they, we've already talked to him about it, they're gonna do it here too.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's done during that time so it's relevant, because if it's not, it's completely irrelevant.
Any other public comment? Alright, that brings us to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended? Motion by Mr. Morris. Second by Mr. Cumbus. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we have, Mr. O'Neill, again for consent agenda number two. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda number two? Or do you... Okay, that's what I was gonna ask. So, Mr. Cumbus is gonna step out of the room for a moment while we do this. Alright. Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda number two?
Sir, move.
We have a motion by Mr. Bossarge, a second by Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And Mr. Cumbus is coming back. County administrator?
I had Matthew come and speak to this.
Hey, good morning, board. We wanted to, uh, just make you aware of this item for the St. Martin Library and Community Center building, uh, before we move forward with it because it unfortunately wasn't a planned project. But, uh, a couple years ago, we did the expansion project on the library. Um, as a part of that project, we tried to reseal the metal roof on the whole entire existing building, the community center and the existing portion of the library. Unfortunately, that just didn't take as well and we've got some really bad leaks coming through the roof in that building. And so we wanted to just go move forward with a more permanent solution, uh, to replace the roof on that building so that we don't compromise any of the newly renovated, uh, interior finishes on the library. Um, so basically, this is just, you know, approving us to advertise for bids for a roof replacement project for that building. Uh, the cost estimate is around three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the project and that's being approved today as the budget for the project. So we just wanted to make sure y'all were, were aware of it.
Is that the whole roof for the whole building or just the side where the library is?
No, it'll be the whole roof, the community center and the library portion.
Alright.
Yeah, I mean, there's no point in building a facility and creating all the new amenities in there and then letting it leak.
Right, right.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve that resolution. Seconded by Mr. Cumbus. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Finance?
Good morning, the only item I have today is to order approving the claim socket.
Motion by Mr. Cumbus.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morris. All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any conversation? Any opposed? I got tongue-tied on that one. Motion carries.
Alright, thank you.
Good morning, uh, the RZON zero-three twenty-two-four zero-zero-zero-four-nine appeal for ten o'clock has been withdrawn.
Alright, we probably still have to, we still need to open and close at ten o'clock?
Still need to announce it at ten o'clock, yes, sir. And there is a, you will be approving an order, basically? Right. As you approve the, uh, the planning commission recommendation? Right, yeah, the next item is to go ahead and approve a planning commission recommendation.
Sir, move.
Got a motion by Mr. Bossarge.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cumbus. Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
One's at ten fifteen and one's at ten twenty, so...
Action items.
Supervisor items, we've got two resolutions. One is a resolution spreading upon the minutes proposed budget of the Mississippi Gulf Coast Community College, fiscal year twenty-two-four and twenty-five. Got a motion by Mr. Bossarge, a second by Mr. Taylor. We had three on that one. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, and then we have a resolution approving the adoption and implementation of the TIF, the government street, Pine Drive Hotel and Development, Ocean Springs. Got a motion by Mr. Cumbus, all second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Now we've got, yes?
If it's alright, I'd like to make a comment, um, about the resolution, I appreciate y'all adopting it, but the comments that were made just a few minutes ago are just fundamentally not correct and they keep being said over and over. So just for your minutes, I want to square that up. What you just did is you authorized a TIF district. You didn't authorize issuing a bond. You created a meets and bounds description, a legal description of what's in the district. You put a limit of up to five million dollars of bonds can be issued for up to fifteen years and you pledged up to seventy-five percent of the increase in adwaren taxes that are created as a result of the project. The developer still has to get the project put together, do the financing. But one of the fundamental things that keeps getting forgotten here is there's no bank in the world that's gonna lend money on a fifty-six million dollar hotel unless it's a hundred percent clean because the hotel, the developer and the bank take on all the liability of it. The DEQ did a study, it was like two-point-three million dollars where it could be chemically treated and they were satisfied with that. But this developer is actually gonna remediate all of that soil out of the property. So this keeps coming back up, meeting after meeting after meeting, and you're not issuing bonds. Bonds are issued after the project is completely finished with a certificate of occupancy. The assessor came in and actually assessed it and because we're using sales tax rebates, a year of actual retail sales has to occur before the Department of Revenue will issue that, uh, certificate. That's when the bond attorney, through further proceedings of the city board, will then size a bond and issue a bond based on the values that are real, not what we're estimating a year or two years in advance. So I just want to get that straight because I keep hearing that same message as if you're issuing a bond and you're not. So I appreciate your time, thank you.
Let me ask you a question. Is there a time limit from, from one, one, which point in time? That, a time limit that the contractor's gotta be complete or the developer's gotta be complete with everything to do with the infrastructure? Or the bonds will not be issued?
Let, um, let me answer that two ways if I can. The TIF plan has got a twenty-five-year shelf life, which you just adopted and the city has previously adopted. It's as of today, any bonds that are issued have to be paid off within twenty-five years of today. So if you're gonna do a fifteen-year bond, which is the max and we authorize in the plan, it means the developer has up to ten years to build whatever they're gonna build. We, we're inducing them to build, um, to get a fifteen-year bond. If they build and on the eleventh year they come in asking for reimbursement for that public infrastructure, you can only issue a fourteen-year bond. So there is a time limit on that basis. The last piece of this step, I guess steps that are necessary is what's called a security and development agreement or reimbursement agreement. It's between the city who's administering the TIF plan and the developer. And that's where conditions get put in such as, hey, you need to build and construct within three years or five years or whatever the scenario is. And that's sort of a negotiation that'll be based on environmental cleanup, the financing, the city puts specifications. It isn't that developers just building infrastructure. The builder may need, just as a, this is not an applicable example, but just to give you a concept, the builder may need a two-inch water line to feed his hotel. But the city may want a ten-inch water line because it's got other developments it wants to see happen in the area. So the city specifies all that infrastructure. And so all of that type of thing is in that security and reimbursement agreement, that language. So if the city, if you, if you think that there should be some kind of time limit, you should convey it to the city prior to them writing and drafting and adopting that reimbursement agreement. Because that's actually the obligation document where it says, "You do this, 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 and this," then we will, to the best of our ability, try to sell this bond and reimburse you. And currently, we're, the engineer's estimate on this project is seven-point-six million and actually it's gone up a little bit more. Um, the maximum bonds, if he spends all fifty-six million on this project in today's terms, based on the tax assessor's estimate of the value of the adwaren tax and the, and the estimate of the sales tax, he'll get back about three and a half million, so about half of what the actual infrastructure cost will be. And so we did a five-million-dollar limit to try to induce him to spend more money or make the development bigger and to provide some flexible room just in case things are different in terms of cost of building. But to answer your question, the TIF plan is limited to twenty-five years from today, meaning all bonds have to be paid off if they're issued. There's no guarantee that bonds will ever be issued on this project. It's, you're, you're trying to induce him and, and, and I guess the last thing I wanted to say is, you know, typical Hampton Inn, Holiday Inn Express type hotel that you see in today's world is about twelve million dollars for an eighty-four-room hotel. If it's a fifty-six-million-dollar hotel, it will be able to compete with the Beauregard and other hotels in Harrison County. And that's the intent. It's a Curio Hotel product, it's their highest end product. About seventy-five percent of the visitation to that hotel will come off their reservation system. That means people are coming from out of our economic market specifically to stay in that hotel. And the other twenty-five percent will be based on the conference center or other things that are going on, um, that, you know, people stay at the Beauregard. Now they'll have a choice if they don't want to be in a casino environment. So it's a huge, huge, um, economic draw, if you will, for Jackson County. And so there's like this bigger picture of all this economic spin-off that will occur as a result of this project. So, I appreciate y'all adopting, I, I hope I answered your question, but...
Yeah, and you led me to another one. In your example, the city would prefer a ten-inch line, can the city demand that happen?
In the security reimbursement agreement, that's correct. That's where they negotiate terms, up to the point that the developer's willing to do it. I mean, the developer's like, "I can't do that because you're using up all of this public infrastructure and I've gotta remediate two and a half million dollars or whatever it is of environmental damage that's sitting on this lot." And so, I don't understand the adversity as it relates to environmental issue because it's there and no one's doing anything with it. And I doubt anybody will because you can just as easily buy a piece of dirt that doesn't have contamination. But this is the right site for this hotel to fit this product. And you've got a private sector solution that's not on your shoulders to remediate if it starts getting into the water to you. You've got somebody really willing to do it and they gotta do it upfront before they'll get financing. That's the part that everybody keeps missing because they don't understand private financing, if you will. But I just want to assure you, there's no hotel going up unless one hundred percent of that contamination's gone first. And the city's gonna make sure of that in that same document. They're gonna require a hundred percent clean report of that environmental concern before they'll issue a building permit. And that's where, that comes in that same document, those requirements. So if there needs to be a timeframe, you must perform in this amount of time, uh, it'll be in that document as well. And the issue with the address was the register agent address had the wrong number. It's now been transferred to a professional register agent service. Uh, the developer's from Mobile, he's just purchased a home in Ocean Springs, he's moving here. It's not a foreign, you know, who is this person? It's a local resident, um, moving into our economy, who's doing a pretty substantial development here, so...
My take, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but when you start saying hotel coming into an area, I start thinking, you know, there's a lot of low-hanging fruit you could pick off of the casinos or different ones. But when it's a Curio-level hotel, you're not picking up what's at the bottom, you're taking off the top end customer.
It's America that we're getting at.
The person who gets on the Hilton app and looks for hotels in an area within thirty miles and they say, "Curio," well, that's where I stay when there's one there. And all of a sudden, you've got a clientele coming there and that's gonna be a top-end person rather than someone that you're picking up from a Motel Six or a Holiday Inn or a hotel we might...
Very different market.
So it's a whole different market and generally they're smaller too than what a Hampton would be or something like that if they, if they built it.
I was actually amazed that Ocean Springs was selected to meet the criteria of a Curio hotel. It's a three-hundred to four-hundred-dollar-room boutique hotel, it's, it's not another hotel.
And for, for me, a TIF has always been something where you use it to, first, maybe to incentivize some big industry or some big company to come to the area that we might be competing with another area for. That would be one piece. And the other piece that you would use a TIF for would be to incentivize a better development to occur rather than a mediocre development in the same spot. And sometimes it takes additional public dollars to come back through in the form of a TIF to get the better development rather than a mediocre development. And I think Ocean Springs deserves better than mediocre. And if we're gonna have a development, we might as well make sure we do everything we can to make it the best. And this is what we've got here and this is our option.
Alright, well, I appreciate y'all giving me the time. I just wanted to get the record straight because I keep hearing that same message, over and over, and it's not true, it's just not true. Thank you.
So we're still on supervis- So we're still on supervisor items. We approved both of those. Mr. Cumbest?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Morris?
Not yet.
Mr. Taylor?
No, sir.
All right. Mine is, it's a Pelium Sentinel. Have you heard of those, anybody? What they do is they, they do a lot, they do a lot of like IT work and like surveillance work, cameras, that kind of stuff. Well, they've got illegal dumping cameras that, that can be purchased on a three-year contract, and what it'll do is you can place that somewhere where you have a dumping problem, and this will film the, it, it gets activated by motion in certain size elements. So if someone starts unloading tires or something, it'll activate the camera like a game camera would. It will film that activity, and then it will take a picture of the license plate of a vehicle if there's one around, and it will give you evidence to be able to prosecute the people for illegal dumping. Something I'd like to look into seeing how many we want or if we want one at all, but there, for the three-year contracts, it's $1,800 a year. The camera's completely portable. You can put it up and move it as you need to, but I'd like to, you know...
We already have that service now through a local vendor. Uh, I've got 12 of them out in different locations throughout some of my hotspots.
How much are they charging?
Uh, what is he charging?
Um, it's, it's, it's bare minimum. It's, it's more like, it's more like game cameras, you know?
Does it go to the cloud?
It's like, it's like $25 a month or something like that.
What about the camera, though?
The camera's like, uh, 200 bucks.
Okay. And it's, and it's, uh, we get an alert if somebody passes by that camera. We get an alert on our phone, and we're able to check it out.
Have we prosecuted people off of it?
Uh, people, people hadn't, uh, nobody's dumped in those areas since we put those cameras up, so I take that as a good, good...
The question I've got is if we put this thing at like the exit 50 parking lot...
Yeah.
What, what point would it pick the people? Like if they're throwing a bag of, you know, from the fast food restaurant out, would it pick that up? If this can do that, then I'm all in to, to get one or two of these and put them up there because, because littering is the number one. I mean, that's one of the biggest problems we have in an area where we are. I tend to just litter the whole way.
Something like the parking lot, you almost need live footage all day because, I mean, that's just constant movement. What they do is they pick up movement, so let's, let's...
But our local vendor...
Well, let's check with them and see if they can do, let's check with them and compare and see if this is a better quality that, that is easier to prosecute or which one picks up the smaller objects because, I mean...
I like the idea because we, we implemented it about six months ago in our district.
No way, because our litter guys that are picking up can't keep up with it.
Yep.
But if it can't pick up the small stuff...
Barry, didn't you buy some?
I have a couple.
Yeah.
I want to give you one of those. Sure do.
And see, see, see which one can prosecute better because I don't want to just film them. I want to prosecute them.
There are hotspots. We ain't had a problem since I put the cameras out. Imagine that.
Do they know, they don't know the camera? Someone told them, maybe?
Nope. So maybe somebody told them or they saw them. They're camouflaged, so...
But these right here, once you get them, you put them up and they, they're there. You can move them wherever you want. If you, if they get damaged, they replace them.
Yep.
They save it, the ti, the video's saved for like 30 days, I think.
Oh, yeah.
All right. All right. Mr. Bossarge?
Yeah, I do. I, I, I got a recognition today. Uh, we're losing a member of our team today. Uh, Mr. Bud Morris is retiring. This will be his last meeting with us, and, uh, he's been our, our courtroom, our, uh, board security for about, what, six, seven years now? Something like that. And, uh, so he's fixing to retire. So, uh, I'd like to recognize Bud for his years of, uh, service to the board and keeping control here in the boardroom when we've needed him. So Bud, enjoy your retirement. I've known you a long time. I know you will. So thank you for your service.
Thank you, Bud.
You have another meeting or how many more meetings do you have?
This is it.
This is the last one?
This is the last one.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Sheriff, we're going to be, we're going to be picky on who you're replacing with, so, uh, you got to be mild-mannered like him.
Since, since we've had him in here, we haven't had another fight in the boardroom, so that's a pretty good...
That's right.
All right. We have anything else on regular...
If we go to closed determination, do you have, do you have a list?
Yes, I have five items for executive session. Litigation involving Sing River Services. I have some strategic discussion regarding Sing River Health System, potential litigation regarding a construction project, a tractor accident claim that we've received, and a settlement of a tax issue.
All right. Do we have a motion to go into closed determination?
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Cumbest and second by Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Only other two things we have, other than insurance?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, my gosh.
Whenever you're ready, Marcus. I wonder if those are empty.
Okay, the first item we have on the agenda is 5501 Haley Circle in Moss Point. The property owner is Duran Parks. We've reached out to Mr. Parks, we haven't been able to get in contact with him. We've got a derelict house, a couple of, two derelict mobile homes, there's an RV on site, rubbish all over the property. As you can see from the pictures, this one's, it's fairly easy. It's definitely a menace. And it is located in a special flood hazard area also, with an elevation of 14 foot. And this house is way beyond 50% damaged, so it would need to be demolished anyway. It's not something that somebody could repair. I've dealt with Mr. Parks many a times in the past, and I've tried to reach out to him about this issue, and haven't been able to get in contact with him. We've sent him notices, we posted the sign at the property. We've had no response back from Mr. Parks. So, we are asking the board to declare this a menace, so we can clean up the property and demolish the home.
All right. Do we have anybody here about this property? There's nobody here for it? And we haven't, and the people you tried to contact haven't ever responded? And we didn't have any neighbors?
No, of course, we sent notices.
We found this on our own by driving around, or did a neighbor report it?
It was reported.
Okay.
Actually, we have Mr. Parks as living at 14803 Timber Ridge in Moss Point. And we sent notices there, and we sent notices, of course, to this property. We've had no response back.
Is someone ready? I'm ready. I mean, as long as we know there's no one here for or against to make a comment. We're ready to move forward.
Yeah, you know, we've done, Mr. Parks has done development in Jackson County in the past, you know, he did an RV park out in Orange Grove area way back. And I guess he's just not interested in pulling this.
All right. Make a motion, we declare a minister public jail.
We've got a motion by Mr. Combs, second by Mr. Bossarge. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, two minutes. I guess we can go ahead, and by the time you get it ready, we'll be ready for the next one.
All right, go ahead.
Hey, Randy, on that one on the bottom, remember the one, did you tell them, whatever you want to do with it, it's up to you on that?
Yeah, we're taking it.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure, because they kept asking me, and I was like, y'all need to talk to Randy.
Yeah, we take it.
Oh, excuse me. Is this the same thing, or two different?
And on the one that we just looked at?
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of innovative wiring there. Is electricity on at that residence?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Like the way you put that innovative wire. I like the way you put that.
Like something I would do.
Innovative wire. That's the first time I heard of that one.
There you go.
Well, we run into a lot of that.
Yeah.
We're ready. 10:20.
Okay. Next one we have on the agenda is 26711 Billy Hinton Road. The property owner is James S. Yon, it's in the estate of, and James L. Yon, who is the new owner, which is the son. We've had correspondence with the son, and we spoke with him and his real estate lawyer, and we let them know that we couldn't stop the process, but he's welcome to come and speak to the board about possibly demoing it himself, and I believe he's here today. This has a, you know, a burnt mobile home, derelict vehicles, equipment all over the property, rubbish, you know, it's got open storage, a big storage container. This is one that also was reported to us, and of course, it's on Billy Hinton Road, which is a pretty well-traveled road, you know, in Jackson County, and definitely a menace, and we're, of course, we're asking the board to declare this and have it cleaned up. We sent all the, sent out all the letters, all the postings, posted it on the property. Of course, we have had correspondence, like I said, with the sons, and he is here to speak to the board also.
All right. Want to talk for or against this?
Sorry, I don't have a proper really address show.
Oh, it doesn't matter, we're good.
Okay. So, I just recently found out about this. My father passed away in that trailer fire back in 2020 in February, and for the past almost four years now, I've been trying to switch it over in my name. There was no, no one's fighting me for the property, it just has taken that long to get it over to my name. And I wanted to demo it, I wanted to clear up the land, because I plan on building on that land, I plan on living there. Me and my father and my little brother worked that land for most of my life, and was not able to require, you know, wasn't able to get the right permits to destroy it, because I didn't technically own the land. And my little brother lives in Okinawa, he was in the Navy, I was in the Army, and I would like to have enough time to find out what permits I need, do the right process, because I want to get it done. I will gladly get it done myself, or any way it takes.
Is the property yours now?
Correct, sir.
Okay. It's in your name now?
Just, just recently, yes, sir.
Do we have prices yet, quotes?
No, sir.
We don't? Well, so you'll have, we still have to get quotes, and then we'd have to come back to us, and we would approve it, so that gives you, what, 30 days, 45 days?
Probably, so.
Or more?
It'll be a little longer, only about days, probably.
And I mean, and you'd all, I mean, do our prices tend to be higher, or in line with what it would be if he got it done on his own?
Yeah, we always get the lowest bid, so.
So, I mean, that would be something, if we got the quotes, you could potentially just...
And I'm more than happy to do that, there's just a couple of things on the property I would like to either be removed, or get the right permits to stay, if necessary, as long as they're not, you know, a menace decided. There's an 18-wheeler trailer on there that has a lot of tools and materials in it, as far as wood and things of that nature, that my dad stored there, and that property is set in a blueberry field that I planted with my dad back when I was five years old. So, there's bushes there, they're just about as old as I am, and I do not want them disturbed or uprooted in any way. So, that's another main concern of mine, is damage to those bushes, because they've been in the family for a very long time.
I explained to him that the tractor trailer truck is not allowed by ride on the property anyway, that that's a violation in itself, so if he wanted to fix that, of course, you'd have to go through the planning permission and ask for approval to keep it on the property, but there again, there wouldn't be a residence on the property, so it would be a tractor trailer, you know, truck on the property prior to having a residence.
There's also, my neighbor who lives right next to that property, he is willing to have it stored on his land, and we can go through getting the permits for that, I just didn't want it to get destroyed or taken away.
But, the neighbor, can he get?
He'd have to go through the same process. He'd have to ask for approval to do that. You know, even if it was on a temporary basis, he'd have to ask for approval.
I don't mind working with you, I like to work with you, you know, if you, but I want it cleaned up, it looks terrible.
Yes, sir.
You know, and it don't need to be sitting there like that, it needs to be taken care of.
I agree, sir, and it would have been done sooner, I just haven't, I haven't had it in my name to where I'd get a permit to.
And I understand, that kind of stuff does take a lot of time, sometimes, you know.
Unfortunately.
What do you think it'd be for you build a house on it?
So, right now, I just started a new job at Chevron, and I'm planning on, I have a two-year plan, budget plan set up to build on that land. I'm living in Theodore currently, but I'm good friends with the neighbors there, they've known me most of my life, and everything like that. My family's owned that land for over 50 years.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, trying to figure out the best thing to do here.
Well, if you declare it a menace, then that gives them the authority to go get the bids and all that stuff, to take it all down, and, but it still has to come back before y'all to get approval to actually do the work.
Yeah.
And, so, I mean, you can take that step and declare a menace, and give them the time it takes for us to take bids before you act on it, or you can table it and give them some time, you know, even prior to doing that, so.
And then if he chooses to use the lowest bidder and pay for it himself, then, you know, it wouldn't have to go to be put on the taxes.
Yeah, okay.
That would definitely be better.
You said that was a possibility, didn't you?
Price-wise, then, yeah.
Well, let's do that, we'll go ahead and declare it, but we'll work with you on it, though.
Mr. Combs, I know a month or two ago, we declared one a menace, and then gave it to them within 30 or 45 days or so, and put it back on the agenda to see, I guess, if a permit had been received on that one, and progress had been made. I don't know what kind of stipulations you may want to add to this one, in other words, if you declared a menace, and the process goes, and if it's going to come back before the board, I think the question needs to be, what does the board want to see to continue to work with him?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, just so we don't kind of get out in a vague area of what's going on. If we could maybe get some...
Do that, and not put it on the consent agenda, just put it under my item, and go ahead and get the bids, and bring it back to the board, and we can see if he's pulled a permit and done any work between that time, and then the board can choose whether or not follow through with accepting the bid.
Okay. That'll work, just do that.
Right, I think that's fine, I think that you had to determine what agenda we want to put it on, and do you want to say, getting a permit, appropriate permits, and if progress has been made, or something to that effect?
I think as far as 18-wheeler goes, he probably needs to apply for that, and to the neighbor's property, that would need to have...
I spoke with him about that in the hall, and explained to him, if the neighbor wants to store it for him, you have to have a special hearing for that.
Special section.
But that, of course, that is, you know, if you apply, he'd run much out for that, so that would happen after the board's decision.
And on those, you only do like a 12-month review, right?
Well, I mean, they can choose to review it six months, 12 months, I mean, it, you know, but they can reset it to be temporarily for X amount of time.
Would you be ready, if we get quotes and we have a low price, would you be ready to act on that at that time?
Yes, sir, I would.
Okay, what's on you?
I'm good with that, yeah.
Reset it for the second board meeting of next month, and see where...
We'll see where we at here.
Where he is at that, at that point.
Yeah, just don't put it...
If it's already been recorded in his name, he can request permits to... If it's already been recorded in his name, he can pull permits today to demo it.
Okay.
If it's, if we have a deed that's recorded.
Do you have your deed, that's recorded?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay. We'll go ahead and declare it, though, but you need to get on, you know, work with Mr. Ketchought, too, on it.
You said it for review?
No, I said it for review, a second meeting in July.
Yeah.
Do you want me to include in there that said for review? Or do we expect permits to be, to be pulled? Or what, what conditions do you want in the resolution?
Permits to be pulled, and, and a significant improvement of property.
Yeah, something like that.
Kind of like what we did, kind of what we did last time.
That'll work.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm making that motion, so...
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Conbus, second by Mr. Bossarge. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay.
We're going back to executive session now?
Motion does. Go back to executive session.
Make a motion, we go back in executive session.
Motion by Mr. Bossarge.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Conbus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.